Protecting the seven of us in all of this.
City Council retained legal counsel on this matter. And you reviewed RFPs and you chose the legal counsel that city staff is working with. That legal counsel is supposed to occasionally report to me, so I'll know where they're at. But their primary goal is meeting the requests of city council.
Okay, so are there's no conflict of interest between the discussions? And so the attorneys that we hired are actually protecting our interests as a counsel as well?
You are their client. And they're on the schedule to show up here and give you a presentation, I think, in two weeks.
Yeah, I think it is.
So you'll get to touch base and ask them those questions again directly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Which we've never really met them before, so.
Right, right, thank you.
Good question, all right. So back to the question, do you want to just keep moving? And then if you, so if anybody thinks you need a break, like, you know, just let's go like this and get up. If you want, and I hope that you feel like you can stand up during these things and listen at the same time, because I certainly like to do that. All right, so this item is a stormwater fee rate study. Finance Administrative Director Maria Sabates here along with Maria DeAndre to present our study and analysis, along with the Bonds and Interest Parks and Recreation Go Bond.
And I'll introduce everybody that's here today. Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I'll try to smile a lot during this presentation. So tonight, I am here to share with you information related to the stormwater fee and rate study and analysis, an update on a timeline, a proposed timeline, if we do so choose this route, for revenue bonds, and also Parks and Rec Go Bonds scenarios. As you'll recall, council had directed us to engage a consultant to gather information related to neighboring jurisdictions, current and historical stormwater fee and rates, and compare them to the city of Englewood. The city selected RafTelus to assist the staff in evaluating those rates and also to build a financial model to support the stormwater drainage projects that have been discussed during past study sessions and regular meetings. Tonight, as Mayor Olson mentioned, I'm joined at the table with Director Maria DeAndre, Director of Public Works and the interim Director of Utilities. A section in tonight's memo also included a potential ballot question to support Parks and Recs projects. Our new Parks and Rec Director Christina Underhill is here also to address any questions you may have specific to those projects. And I'm sure former Director of Parks and Rec Dorothy Hargrove will be readily able to assist, if needed, as well in that area. And then joining city staff today is Todd Christiano and Alex Gering from RafTelus. And then also David Bell and Andrew Wheeler from Stiefel, our financial advisor. And I'd like them, I'd like to thank them for joining us and being able to respond to any questions that you have regarding the fee rate study or related financials that I'm not able to answer. Before I begin, I'd like to say that tonight's presentation provides new information to city council. And we will continue to address any questions that you have specific to projects that we've been discussing over the past several weeks. We'd be open to those as well, because I know that that information has been shared over the course of many study sessions. So we want to make sure that we continue to answer questions as they come up. So with that, I'll begin. I'm going to take just a little bit of time to preface before I get into the actual results of the study, because staff certainly recognizes the burden that additional fees and rates actually put onto the citizens and the taxpayers. So we could, as we've discussed, bring forth a request to transfer funds from the general fund in the amount of 10% of the stormwater utility revenues, which isn't substantial, of course, but we would do that in the form of a grant, not a loan. With the current revenues, on the current, based on the current fees and rates, a conservative figure would be approximately $75,000 could be transferred. However, if fees and rates are increased, of course, that amount would increase proportionately, 10% of that. In addition, in previous study sessions, we have discussed the possibility of a state revolving fund loan, sometimes referred to as the Colorado Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund. To that end, the city has completed the pre-qualification form. We have also held a pre-application meeting. And we have done the project needs assessment. And we also have done, drafted a FEMA Advanced Assistance Application. On February 20th, we plan to meet again with the team to discuss whether or not we have made a decision to move forward in that direction. What I will say is that regardless of whether or not we move forward with any type of funding in the form of a loan, a fee or a rate increase would be required at this point to support the projects specifically for S1 and S2, as we have been discussing. Staff also realizes that it's difficult for city council to make a decision regarding one utility without having all of the information related to the other utilities. And last week, when Director DeAndre talked about the stormwater funds requirement for S1 and S2, we laid out a timeline for the other utilities, and that also was included in your packet tonight. And we can talk about that towards the end. We do expect that the water and sewer master plan reports are expected to be completed in early spring. And those comparison of current rates relative to rates reported are required to support water and sewer infrastructure. And the ongoing maintenance need would be discussed related to those other utilities at that time. It's important, however, that council does start evaluating the funding required to address the stormwater drainage requirements and system infrastructure needs. And so it's our intent to bring forth a palatable phased-in approach and recommendation for council to consider and discuss tonight. Staff will continue to evaluate the best cost of capital solution for these projects, for bonding and/or an infrastructure loan or a revolving fund loan, as we had discussed. But tonight, the discussion will be focused on sharing the council, sharing with the council the fee rate study outcome and the level of funding to support the stormwater drainage projects, regardless of how you so choose to accomplish that. Okay, so RafTelus submitted their evaluation of the current and historical stormwater utility fees and rates. And they have also provided the city, based on our direction of certain assumptions, with a five-year stormwater utility fund financial plan. The recommended fee structure for the next five years enables the city to fund the S1 and S2 projects to the amount of approximately $30 million, plus fund $500,000 in maintenance and operations in 2021, and assumes a $1 million investment in ongoing needs after that. And as a reminder, council would be required to vote on any fee rate or increase to support a revenue bond. So at this point, I'd like to take an opportunity to review the assumptions that were built into that financial plan, and then also a look at the other jurisdictions' historical rates as compared to Englewood. So in this, we'll talk about the study goals and objectives. We'll look at the historical bill surveys, our financial plan projection that I just provided an overview for, and then a typical bill survey under existing and proposed rates. So when we set forth and set RafTelus on their way, the one thing that we had asked them to do is to develop a five-year financial plan that sustains the long-term financial health of the storm drainage fund in addition to funding these projects. The project rate revenues need to be sufficient to meet our annual expenditures. We need to optimize revenue, increasing the balanced use of rate revenue and bond. We need to maintain our reserve levels in accordance with industry-best standards and practices. We would need to satisfy all debt service coverage requirements. And we propose rates to fully recover the utilities' annual expenditures. We asked RafTelus to go back approximately 20 years and compare Englewood's quarterly rate for the storm drainage utility for a comparison of a residential customer with a parcel size of approximately 9,000 square feet or an impervious area of 9,800 square feet. As you can see in 2002, at our rate of $4.60, excuse me, I know this is going to happen tonight, $4.16 as compared to the other municipalities. You can see that we were in 2002 below these jurisdictions.
Could I ask just a quick question? Do you know how we compared to Denver with that? Because when I was on water and sewer, we always compared to Denver, and Denver's not on here.
We have comparisons for Denver in future years. That was information, and I would ask Todd, the information, if it wasn't included in this presentation, was not available.
Okay, thank you.
Is that an accurate statement? In 2008, again, you know, we made comparisons with the information that RafTelus was able to either collect from the jurisdiction itself or from online data that was provided. And you can see our fees did not change. And as you look up the chart as compared to the previous chart, you can see that increases started to occur in some of the jurisdictions, not all. In 2012, our rate remained the same at $4.16. Again, if you compare the slides, again, we're adding more information. Some of the jurisdictions increased. All were above ours, but some increased and some significantly. And what I'll stop to say here is that with Fort Collins and specifically, they faced the floods that occurred that year up north and realized that they needed to address the storm drainage issues that they were experiencing. And the fees were increased significantly relative to the floods that had happened up north at that time. And in 2019, you'll recall that we came forth and had requested that our quarterly fees increased, and you did approve an increase to $13.16. And we moved ahead of some of the jurisdictions that we were behind in the previous years. But we still, as a comparison, remained in the lower quartile as compared to a lot of the neighboring cities that we were able to capture data for. So I guess I'll stop there and get immediate reactions unless, if you want me to just keep moving forward. Because I think, you know, I skimmed through that pretty quickly. And I will recap it as it relates to Denver and the other, and I'll talk about 2020 as it relates to Denver. But I think the main point that we wanted to convey in the fee rate study, and the reason that we engaged RafTelus, was to show that not only did we have, not only was Englewood significantly below in 2002, as other cities continued to increase theirs over the past 20 years, we remained the same until last year. So it was a pretty significant finding.
Anybody want to jump in at this, member Russell?
I just have a question about fee and rate study. Does that only deal with what other places are paying? Or does it also deal with what we need to fix our problem?
So when we talk about the financial study that we're going forward with in this presentation, we will talk about what's required to fix our needs.
Okay.
If I could add to that, the bulk of the study is really looking at what our needs are and how much money and what the rate should move to to meet those needs. But it also included just this comparison, so you all could see kind of how we compare to other communities as well.
Okay, thank you. Looks like you can move forward.
Okay, okay. So moving towards answering that question, again, as we move forward into the five-year model, the projections that are included in this were based on our budget data and a five-year capital improvement program. The annual inflationary factors that we included were an increase of 3.5% in operating expenses. The target reserves, best practices that I mentioned, 60 days of operations and maintenance costs, capital one-year depreciation expense. Our debt service coverage requirement was approximately 1.25 times per net income. You'll see it's slightly above, particularly early on, because we need to establish a revenue to support the bond issuance to attract the bondholders and attract a lower rate. And we also included approximately $30 million bond issuance for S1 and S2 projects beginning in 2020. So the financial plans that we're putting forth assume how the city of Englewood would be able to fund the $30 million bond issuance to support the S1 and S2 project. I think that's to your point. What do we need to sustain that within the city of Englewood? Along with $500,000 in operations and maintenance in 2021, and then a million dollars going forward in 2022 through 2024, within the five years that this financial model projects. So this is really the crux of the matter before we start talking about the fee and rate increases that are meant to support this. So with the assumptions that I just set forth, you can see we would have to achieve earnings or revenue, a million, a million dollars this year, increasing to $3.5 million over the next five years to support that bond issuance and to support the target reserves that I've just talked about, relatively stable, and the O and M expenses that we shared. So in order to do that, a residential quarterly bill that today is in 2019 is $13.16. In 2020, would increase approximately $6.97 to $20.13. An additional $10.67, or a total of $30.81 in 2021 per quarter. In 2022, an additional $12.94 to $43.74. An additional $14 in 2023 to a total of $57.74 per quarter in '23 and '24, again, to support the bond issuance. And again, I mentioned that the debt service coverage would be higher in 2020 as we establish the foundation of, to be able to go out to the bond issuance in the market. So it is an increase, a substantial increase, but it is also a $30 million investment that we're talking about. This shows graphically that increase, comparison of the residential bills as they would increase. And I wanted to show in 2020 where the increase to $20.13 would place us in comparison to other cities in the jurisdictions. And this is the chart that would also include Denver at $39.27, Fort Collins at $48.92, and Boulder at $52.62, along with other neighboring communities, such as Aurora at $31.38. So we also asked for the commercial customer with an impervious area of 42,000 square feet, where Englewood stands, Englewood stands in comparison in 2019 and 2020 with the recommendations that we've set forth relative to those same jurisdictions. And you can see those comparisons that were included. And this is just an example for Englewood only, where this would compare for our local grocery store, family restaurant, a fast food, church, a hospital, a gas station, what the 2020 quarterly bill and what the 2019 quarterly bill would be. So with that, I want to take a breath. It's a lot of information to share. I also want to talk about Parks and Rec tonight, so I can ask if you'd like to take time to talk about specifically stormwater drainage or if you'd like me to proceed into Parks and Rec.
Member Russell?
So these rate increases are not only, that you've laid out for us, are not only going to fund the bond issue or the loan or whatever, but it's also going to fund $500,000 in 2020 for maintenance and a million dollars a year for maintenance going forward?
In 2021, $500,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, but yes. And then in 2022 through '24, a million, yes.
Above paying the.
Debt service.
The debt service.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you for that presentation. Those are big numbers. How long is that term on that, in the assumptions on the bond issue for paying off that 30 million?
I'm going to, I'm going to look behind me only because we ran several scenarios, and I just want to make sure I have the right number. 25 years.
25 years, so the rates, just to pay for the S1 and S2, would need to stay at that level for 25 years? Any improvements in the future would need to be, would require an additional increase if we required more improvements to the storm drain system?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Member Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. So the projections, it gets to 2024 where it hits 57.54 quarterly. Prior to that, in 2023, it's 57.74 as well. It doesn't forecast beyond that. I think this goes to Councilmember Anderson's question. I mean, we know it won't go below that again. But is it able, are you at all able to forecast when those next increases just naturally would come along?
I can't without direction from council regarding the projects that you'd like to do or if there would be maintenance issues, unless if you have any comments you'd like to make regarding that.
Just, thank you. I think the, what we would recommend is, as we've seen in the past, is instead of doing very large increases, is doing some small incremental changes, maybe almost every year, to keep up not only with kind of ongoing increasing costs, but also to address future capital costs.
Thank you.
Member Stone?
And if I'm reading the colorful graph correctly, it's with the debt service and maintenance is keeping us right at almost exactly our target reserves. No excess.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Mayor Partem?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I kind of wanted to go back to what we spoke of last week and just see if that plays a role into anything that we're discussing tonight in terms of the rate increases. So we talked about some sort of project and program funding that you'll be speaking to, for federal grants, federal dollars or anything like that. Does that play a role in any of these numbers? Or would that be just, if we, because we're only talking about S1 or S2, are we looking at those programs more for like S3 or any of the other 12 or 13 other projects that we were looking at?
So when we submitted the application for the revolving loan that I mentioned earlier, it was specifically for S1 and S2. I'm not going to suggest that that couldn't be a conversation that we had in the future. We perhaps could do that. I will say, regardless of the tool by which we go forward with, whether it be a bond issuance that we set forth or through a revolving fund, there is going to be a debt component to that that will require a fee increase. We do know, and we are an AA+ rating. That's what we would be going to the market with. The loan on the revolving fund is AAA+ however, so the rate could be a little bit better. However, there is an administrative burden that comes with a revolving fund. And as such, they do offer somewhat of a reduction in the rate that we would pay back. But, and we would still need to determine what that would be. And I don't know if this is answering your question specifically. So it was S1, S2 for both assumptions here. There's a possibility we could talk about S3 as it relates to it as far as the application for the revolving fund. But either way, it's their financing mechanisms. So that's why I had stated at the beginning that we could determine how we were going to move forward, you know, at a future date. It's really what's palatable to the council as far as a rate and fee increase to support any type of borrowing, quite frankly. Is that fair?
Member Russell?
I remember in 2014, before I came on to city council, there was a flood study in northeast Englewood. And that needed to be funded, I want to say, $100 million. But we couldn't do it until Denver does their share from the river through Harvard Gulch and up here. But they were having pretty severe flooding in that area. So I think we need to keep this problem in mind too, because there was already a study done back then, and pipes needed to be put in the ground in that area. And so if we have flooding next year in northeast Englewood, we could be facing even potentially greater problems than we're addressing right now here. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind.
Member Questa?
Thank you. We did have some discussions last week on S3 and S4 as well. Did you put a dollar amount on that, those two projects? And even individually, if you have them, and then total?
Yes, if you recall, we were kind of talking about like a modified version of S3, what I called S3A. And that was somewhere in the range, I believe, of $3 million.
For S3A? And what would S4 run? Do you know?
If I recall correctly, that was, in total, I think, was under a million dollars, if I recall correctly.
You know, as I hear those numbers, it's $4 million, which is a lot of money. But it's 10% more than, 12% more than our current. And so it's in the back of my mind, potentially including those. I don't suppose we've run those numbers yet, although I imagine it wouldn't be that much more difficult to throw four more million onto it. Okay, very good. Thank you, that answers it. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Stone?
To Councilmember Rita's question, is there any potential for intergovernmental agreement that would help finance something in that area with Denver? If Denver's also going to suffer from similar flooding if we don't get the drainage handled to help pay for something in that area?
So the project that Councilmember Russell referenced, and it's Harvard Gulch is downstream of kind of where Englewood is. And so we flow actually, or our water flows into Harvard Gulch in Denver. And so I think it's less of an intergovernmental agreement as much as they have to prioritize that project in order for us to do any good. So we could move forward with a project up there, but we're essentially forcing more water into their undersized system. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg kind of thing. Just like if we were to do S2 ahead of S1, it doesn't make a lot of sense and might negatively impact some people. So we would have an intergovernmental agreement, but they're not going to pay for anything within Englewood.
This would involve the urban core as well on this, right? With the North District?
Yes, similar.
So interestingly enough, that that was the one that sparked all the studies back in 2014. And we're sort of hamstrung there. In the meantime, are there things we can continue to be doing to handle things in those two areas, particularly the flood district area of the 120 homes that are in that area? That would, I don't know if they'd come out of this, probably not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, and to Councilman Questa's, you know, comment, what can we do in small localized areas to help with flooding? So up on Ogden in the 2900 block, we know we've got some localized issues. We might not be able to solve the entire big problem, but maybe we can do something locally to help that situation. And so we want to incorporate that into our kind of overall plan. They might not be the million-dollar projects, but maybe it's a couple hundred thousand here and there around the city to help address localized issues.
And the parks can be part of that? I mean, as we look at some of the renovations in parks, we can continue to look at where we catch water and.
Absolutely. And I think even the item that we'll talk about next is what does private, how does private development play into this in terms of additional water detention on their properties as properties turn over and redevelop?
Further questions? Do you want her to move on to Parks and Rec?
Yep, we can circle back, okay. So switching gears and talking about Parks and Rec, as you recall, during the 2020, I'm going to just move forward into, let me do this first. Okay, I know it's difficult to read, but this information was included in your packet.
Easier.
Especially with blue tape. I don't have blue tape for Parks and Rec tonight, sorry. So as you recall, in the 2020 budget cycle, we had discussed with you the possibility of issuing a ballot question to support Go Bonds in 2019. However, the decision was made to postpone to provide the necessary time to finalize the project list, to seek your approval, and to also. to seek your approval and to also seek input of the community. So the list of projects is set ahead of you and the prioritize, the prioritization of Cushing Park, Jason Park, Miller Field and Little Dry Creek Greenway is estimated to cost approximately 14.7 to 18 million dollars. And in years since the master plan was created, the investment of between 1.5 to 3 million is estimated for Pirate's Cove to, to move it forward into the, the new and bright and shiny facilities that are offered elsewhere and to really help with the decline in, in the revenue that we know we're experiencing. Staff has been successful in getting grants to support Parks and Rec, but larger investment is required. So GO bonds are different than a revenue bond. The GO bonds do require a vote of the people and the council will need to decide at a future date whether or not to refer the ballot question for November. And it's important that, you know, we understand the direction that you would like staff to take regarding that because it's a requirement for us to notify the county of Arapahoe, our intent to participate in the election by July 26th of this year. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done leading up to that date to make sure that we are ready to go. And first and foremost, the community outreach aspect of it is so critically important as we move forward towards November that we want to prepare enough time to get the information out as soon as possible. So the information that was included in your packet regarding the financial impact, because there is a component of, of course, of that required to the magnitude, the assumption that we built into a model is approximately a 20 million or a $30 million bond issuance that would be assessed with an increase to the mill levy. And the example that was provided in your packet was the impact to a homeowner that has a home that's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So for a $20 million investment, the increase would be approximately $11.24 at current rates and assuming a 150 basis point increase to approximately $12.52 per year. That's a per year figure. For a $30 million investment, approximately $16.92 increase if rates remain about the same to approximately $18.77 if they increase about 150 basis points. So another substantial investment to address our parks and recreation needs as well. We wanted to put forth both of those ideas in your, your minds and open it up for comments tonight and just really seeking your direction to move forward at the regular meetings in the future to come forth and request for a decision at that point. So with that, I will open it up to discussion before talking about timelines and as this relates to other projects that we're talking about relative to water and sewer.
Just as a overview, just to make sure, what is our current average home right now resident, private residence cost or value? Do you know, it's like, I think I was given something last week at Mayor, or Dr. Cog that was a little off, a little low. Is it 300? Okay. That would be helpful to figure out. A hundred thousand is this, but you three times is $33, right? So Mayor, or Member Russell is first, I think.
Thank you. I, it's 1.5 to 3 million to bring Pirate's Cove up to, to get it where it will generate more income.
I don't know that we can say that with any certainty, but that's an estimate to make it more appealing.
Since Pirate's Cove is not an enterprise fund and we do have money left in reserve, we could take the money out of reserves to pay for the upgrade and whatever we wanted to do at Pirate's Cove and not have to put that out to, to be a bond from the people.
I think you are referring to the unassigned fund balance where we have a balance of approximately nine million dollars.
Yes.
And that is true. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Anderson and then Member Questa?
Thank you. Again, similar question to before. What's the, what was the assumptions in terms of the term of these GO bond issues? How long, how long is it going to take to pay those off if we use your assumptions here?
Okay, I'm going to turn around and look at Andrew Wheeler, but I think it's 20 years.
Would you like to come up maybe? Do you think, that might be better and share a mic with him? There's one right next to Maria D. There's another one right there. Oh, yeah, you move over.
Thank you. Is it 20 years?
It is.
Okay, 20 years.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yep, that's the question I had.
Yeah, so based on the series 2017 GO bonds, we kept a similar term of 20 years.
Okay.
Member Questa and then Mayor Portem?
Thank you. My question was someone asked, or answered, excuse me, and answered with how much do we have in the unassigned reserves? And it's nine million currently?
It is. We are just closing the books, however, so I expect to bring forth a preliminary estimate. I believe I'm due to come back on February 10th, so the balance could be, could, could be higher.
And it appears in my two years here going into the third that it's trended upward. I, I don't, I can't recall a dip. Does that sound correctly that we've continuously grown that unreserved fund balance?
That is correct.
Knock on wood.
That is correct.
Since she came. She's like magic fairy dust.
Sure, yeah, no kidding.
No, no. Remember what I said last time? I'd like it to, to be close.
I know we're in the questioning phase and we'll get to comments, but I think that we should start talking about that reserve. And I think that Councilmember Anderson brought us up as well. For that to just sit there and, and, does that collect interest? I was going to say dust. Hopefully it's collecting interest.
It is.
Good, very good. Okay, thank you.
Not a lot, though.
Pardon?
Not a lot, though.
Yeah.
It'd be better used.
Yeah, to, to actually do something that's going to cost a whole lot more if we did it in five years. Yeah, Mayor Portem?
Thank you. Actually, so two questions. One is more of a ask, similar to what we did with the, the rate studies with other municipalities. You know, for the parks and rec, I like to see something similar because I believe, you know, citizens that are actually under the purview of South Suburbans, I think they're paying quite a bit more than even the figures that you were presenting today.
So what we're proposing is that it would be part of a mill levy increase. There are, I believe, some municipalities that have done special assessments. So it would be a combination of both and I don't know if you'd like to comment on that. No? Okay. So is that, if, if that is a request, I can look into it and advise the cost that that would be to do that? Sorry, I thought, I thought Director Hargrove was coming to the table.
No, people were leaving.
Okay, okay.
No, I guess my-
So either correct me or no?
No, I guess my point is I got to go back and check my math on this because I remember looking at the numbers. But I remember just seeing, you know, somebody that's living under South Suburban is paying about $16 a month and you're stating at least with a hundred thousand dollar house at that, or value of a hundred thousand was about $12.50 or something along those lines. So it is still small compared to what some of the other surrounding municipalities are currently paying.
And I, I seem to recall that we might have provided that in the past. So let me look into information that we've provided in the past and dust it off and provide that information to you again.
We're getting some nods in the back from a couple people.
I don't know, I just felt it.
Should be easy to find.
I felt like, I just felt the nods or something. I don't know.
Mayor, can I add that the average, excuse me, the median home price is about $380,000?
Yeah, that's what I thought. So three times or four almost.
And then also just in terms of using the unassigned fund balance, I'd be in favor of that just starting to move funds, transfer it to the capital improvement fund and start. I personally would like to start looking at it in terms of just parks specifically. Cushing Park would be the top of mind for me. But I'd like for council to start having those type of discussions.
Member Questa?
I, I imagine what I presented if you had it. You haven't, we don't have any polling on, on a ballot measure like this and how that might be received by the community?
I do not. Actually, can I ask Director Hargrove to join us? She might have some information to provide.
Some background on how we did the police building and stuff, Member Questa? Was we did, it was a major push to do polling and make sure that we were on par with what we thought people would do. Yeah, rather than waste our time in there voter fatigue.
We have not done specific voter polling on this issue. I mean, we kind of talked about doing that last year, but decided, and that's one reason that we need to move, if you want to move in that direction, we need to move expeditiously, so there's plenty of time for that. The Parks and Rec master plan involved an extraordinary amount of public outreach and the priorities that are set here on the summer reaction plan reflect a lot of community input, but not, you know, necessarily statistically valid or, you know, four years later, where are we?
Sure. Well, one other statement that I think needs somewhat to a question. I was meeting with a constituent within the past couple of weeks and he mentioned potentially a citizens initiative on this. And so I'm wondering if anybody's heard anything that citizens might be putting forth an initiative? Is this something we need to compete with or coordinate in where, I'm not sure if, if we end up stepping on each other's toes if we wanted to go forward or something like this?
I fully believe we need to coordinate and get information out and be very open and very forthcoming of lots of information. Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to let council know that in addition to meetings that occurred before I got here, particularly with the former Parks and Recreation Library Director Dorothy Hargrove, we do have a meeting this week with a group of people who have been asking for a few weeks to meet with myself, Deputy City Manager Hargrove. We're also going to include our new Parks Recreation Library Director Christina Underhill. And so they are going to come, I suspect, with a number of requests. And as the mayor indicated, it's our intention to really try to coordinate with them because we think it would actually be better for this to be more council-driven than resident-driven. Although we will need certainly if you all decide to pursue a bond, that would be a group that would be probably your biggest champions out there trying to get the vote out.
My last conversation with some of those folks is they really wanted us to take the lead and they would help us get the vote out. But if there are other avenues for us to do this by using unreserved funds, and we need to be, be clear, I think this, this council's new and we can re-decide how we want to do that. We have not gone that route in the past and there's, maybe this is the time to be doing it with that.
I will jump in if I may and say that part of working with council is to make sure that any planning is realistic. I mean, how much can we do in, you know, five years or three years? You know, what makes sense? I mean, if you look at the total price and to have $16, it's like 50 million. And, you know, it's just, we cannot fix everything, I don't think, realistically right at once. So working in terms of what our priorities are is definitely part of that communication.
Are you finished? That's right. Member Russell?
We still have a Parks and Rec GO bond out there, correct? And when does that get paid off?
I'm fairly confident that it is paid off in 2023. And that frankly was passed in order to build Pirate's Cove the first time. It's just that we didn't have any mechanism for continuing capital investment and, and they improved the Malle Center and several other things. But that will be, unless you wanted to continue that for some reason, that will be a reduction. I think it's one point, it's, you know, like 1.9 mils, something like that.
So in 2023, that amount of money would be available to pay towards parks? Or, I mean, I hate to do another bond issue if there's a way that we can come up with the money. If we have money in reserves and we're doing some of the projects now and then?
Yeah, I think the, the income from that bond issue is about a million a year, which pays our debt service. So, you know, the, the citizens will not be burdened with paying off that debt, but there was no mechanism there for capital accumulation. So, you know, we-
I mean, it goes away.
That, that is a, you know, sort of an expense to the citizens if you want to think it that way. But unless you wanted to reissue that bond and spend a million dollars a year on parks maintenance so that we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball, you know, that's entirely different discussion. But I don't, you know, if, it's not going to generate any cash for us to-
Right, but it's, it's going to lessen the burden-
On the taxpayers.
On the taxpayers if we waited a couple of years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a possibility of doing a combo of waiting, doing some things now or that, or at least picturing it so that people know there's going to be some reduction at some point as well. But I am, I am really concerned about our maintenance planning for Parks and Rec. We have not done well and you know that more than others that that's in our new director process to figure that out. So I'm glad this is all being shown to us at once.
So I want to confirm it is 2023 and the principal and interest payment was 1.1 million.
Is 1.1 million?
Yes.
Do we know what the, what's the aver, what's the rate on that for, for homeowners too?
Calculating, I don't, I don't think it's in the deck.
It's become so much part of our lives we don't notice.
I did bring, we'll let Andrew look to see if it's provided in that deck.
Well, she's looking for that. We would have to go back to the voter though in order to extend that, right?
And maybe as you're, oh, did you find it?
So the, yeah, so the coupon payments right now are 4% coupons. So the interest rate probably was a little bit lower, but the actual interest rate that you're paying on the par amount is, is 4%, which is, you know, about market, like close to market rate right now, I would say, or common, the 4% coupon. Your, your actual interest rate is probably going to be a lot less, so.
And so what does it look like for a homeowner?
For a homeowner?
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, that's included in their, in their mill now. So, I mean, whatever the aggregate mill is, you would just take the proportionate share of the 1.1 million, so.
Again, it depends on how much you're going to borrow.
Borrow, okay. Yep. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
How much did we originally borrow?
So the, the series 2010 bonds, they refunded the original series, which I think were issued in 2001 or 2002. So the total par on that series was just short of $10 million. I think it's 9.85 million. And there's about, how much is left on there? There is three and a half million left on that series.
So you'd like some direction from us?
I would. So, so we included the funding timeline as it related to our stormwater projects, when we expect to have future discussions regarding the water and sewer system proposals and also sprinkling in there the park and recreation projects and, and kind of what we're working towards. This is incredibly small, but it's included in your deck. We really just wanted to make sure that you knew what we were working towards as a staff for all of these integrated utilities and parks and rec projects and when we would be coming back, hopefully with decision points for you to make at future regular meetings. Again, I know it's small. I didn't expect to really necessarily go through this, but would really be interested in understanding your thoughts on next steps regarding the stormwater utility, fee rate increase, and then also Parks and Rec.
Member Anderson?
I guess, I don't know where the rest of the council is on this. I know it's, there's, there's a sense of urgency around the storm drain issues, but I am really curious as to what the, the sanitary sewer and water studies are going to show. And I'm, I'm really hesitant to make a $30 million decision before we get the information on that. And I know that, that puts the timeline off and we have to raise these fees before we can, you know, prove that we have the funding to get the bonds and all of that. But that's just, it's, it's a real concern to me is if we get, get that, go, let's go with a $30 million bond and start moving that, that freight train in that direction and then we get these studies back and, and, and we got, oh, we need to do 20 million for our sewer and 20 million for our wa- and at some point, we're going to just tap out what it's possible to do. And so really having all that data to me is, is really important in driving these decisions.
Mayor Portem?
So unfortunately, we are where we are with some of these. So in terms of the stormwater, I, I, I don't want to delay it any further. Seeing that chart where some of the municipalities started raising up their rates in 2012 and we just kept staying low during that entire time just infuriates me just seeing that. So unfortunately, I, I don't, you know, if, if we do get information back that sanitary sewer or water does need fixes, I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. I think we have to, I, I see where you're coming from in terms of just, at, at some point, we are tapping out the, the residents, but yeah, I just, I just feel that in terms of the- In terms of the stormwater, obviously, to me, it's like we need to move forward with that. In terms of Parks and Rec, that one's a little bit different for me. I'd like to see us start working a plan in terms of just shifting some of the unassigned fund balance to capital improvement fund with the sole purpose of actually improving our parks. There's just, that would be my preference, obviously. If the citizens feel differently than, you know, it is what it is, but that and, you know, I'll have to look at numbers, but also think about in terms of, you know, some of the students at, at the schools, there's a higher portion of the student population that are on reduced or free lunch and I believe it's over half. I may be wrong about that, but it is. And so, any type of increases is going to hit a lot of our population very hard. So, to me, stormwater is a requirement or it's a priority. Parks and Rec would fall below that. We have other mechanisms to fix our parks, so that's my two cents.
Member Stone.
I just want to say I agree with Members, or Mayor Protem Sierra on this. This is one of the biggest issues that I heard last year when talking to voters. And I even had some voters ask, what if it's going to cost us money and it's an unpopular decision that you have to make? And I made a commitment to be a one-term city council member if that was necessary, so.
Member Anderson.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of split the difference here because I, I totally get it. Something needs to be done. I think our, you know, regardless, our rates on storm drain need to go up, if not, if not just for maintenance or for doing a smaller dialed back project. That's what I'm going to, I mean, that's, and what I'm concerned about is if we, if we commit to that path of we have to issue a bond now, we make that decision now, is there a way to just say, we need to raise these rates, we know we need to raise them at least this mu, much and to, to make sure we're going to meet our maintenance requirements and possibly a smaller project? And that'll also prepare us for issuing, issuing bonds if we decide to do that once we have all the data. In other words, can we kind of have our cake and eat it too here and start planning for that path without committing to it a hundred percent?
Not on revenue bonds. You have to commit to the projects.
Before you ra, before you raise the rates?
Well, you can raise the rates.
That's what I'm asking.
We just can't, yes, you can raise the rates. We just cannot go out to, for a bond issuance without identifying what projects we're going forward with.
So, that's my question, is could we, could we raise the rates to that first year, the 2021 level or whatever it was, in anticipation that we, we want to issue those bonds if, if we get back the, the water and sewer studies and it turns out that, okay, we can, those are, those are more manageable and then we can go ahead and issue the bonds as needed for the storm drain. But say we get, get some information back in a couple of months that go, no, we do have projects to do there. We need to, we need to think creatively about how we can dial back the storm drain project to make sure we're not, you know, we're not sitting at, you know, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred million dollars in ten, fifteen years. That's my real concern is that every, you know, we're going to keep coming, in, in five years is going to be a hundred million dollar, you know, this hundred million dollar problem's going to come up. And at some point, we're going to tap it out and we won't be able to go back and undo the things that we committed to before we had all the data in our hands. And it seems like two or three months is not too long to wait to gather all the information and not to say that we're not going to do something about this, but to make sure we really know what, what we're up against. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
And I think in the information in your package, we did include, you know, an incremental in 2020, working towards, you know, an increase over the next several years. So, I, I think that that, that could work. Do you agree? Just from your preparation for...
Yes. Yep. So, I mean, we, we've discussed with Maria, I mean, you know, the city clearly has to do something to, to start building reserves to be able to pay for some of the pay-go projects, even if they're some of the, the smaller ones. So, you can always raise rates and then decide not to issue bonds if you go that route. But like Maria said, when, when you go out to the market and you speak to investors and you, and you go to issue debt, you are not guaranteeing, but you're projecting specific coverage and in this case, it's, it's one point two five times coverage to, on your debt service. So, you have to have the rates to be able to do so.
Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to actually clarify something Mr. Anderson said.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yeah.
I trust him directly. So, Mr. Anderson, am I correct in understanding, and I, I am a hundred percent, of course, in favor of having as much of the information as we can before we make a decision? Sensible. However, are you suggesting that we may get to a point in time, should we have all of that information, where we may want to delay S or modify the S1, S2 plan? Is that what you were talking about?
Um...
In favor of...
I, I think, you know, I'd want to take everything into consideration or, you know, and, and make sure that we're, that's a, like, we're not going to, yeah, I, I think that would, that would be where I'm driving at. Is that the number one priority across all of our systems in the entire city? I think it would be helpful to have that data before we made that, that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, keep going.
So, with all of the meetings, we've had discussions during study sessions about the S's and all the details around options and timing, all, all the options. I don't see how we cannot do S1 and S2. I mean, I just don't, I think it's impossible to move forward without doing those. I, I don't even see it as a question of discussion anymore. I think it's too little even, you know, the S3 we talk about, but that's my point of view. I'm one of seven. And I also, to Mr. Anderson's, and I'm saying this with respect, of course, to your mention of the timing, one thing I do have in mind is, is the timeliness of this, the S project based on our, our summer rain season and the urgency since 2018 that's been upon us and staff has done plenty, even though there may still be some citizens who aren't clear on what's being done and feel that nothing's being done. We've done tons so that we can make the right decision. But, I don't know, I, with all that I know, I, I cannot in good faith delay any of that plan in favor of anything right now.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
Let's go, let's go on, Member Russell, and then we'll come back and, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, am on board with moving forward with the rate increase for S1 and S2. And the truth is, once we increase the rates and the fees, it is an enterprise fund, it can't go for anything else. Once that, that is committed, it goes for storm water drainage. And I, we have got to do this. We have been talking about it for a year and a half and, and I, I know that we have some other things coming up. If you want to tie parks to this, I, I'm not okay with doing the parks and rec because I do believe we have other things far more pressing than, our parks have been neglected and I'm not saying that they haven't, but I'm saying we have undergrounds, infrastructure, water and sewer lines and other things that have to be taken care of. And I, I think that there are other funding mechanisms for the parks and rec. We're, we're doing minimal, but I, I think we just, I'm all for waiting at least a year on the parks and rec because I do believe, once we get closer to that bond maturing and that money is going to be freed up, it would be another opportunity. And by then, if we have other problems, we'll know what the real priority is. Thank you.
Member Stone.
You may not have the answer to this question, and I don't really expect you to, but if we just hammered out approvals on everything that we're laying out here, what would the fastest possible timeline be for completing S1, S2?
In my packet from last week, I'd provided kind of a timeline, so...